All right, if we would, let's stand say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd like to welcome everybody out on this pretty Thursday evening. We'll have some interesting stuff to talk about tonight, I'm sure. Right, now we're getting started with somebody approve the agenda. And is anybody will make any additions or anything to it before we roll on?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would, I would like to request that we add resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine to a post Senate Bill six seventy-five to the agenda, please, under regular agenda.
You want to put it on the regular agenda?
Yes, sir.
Would that be E, I guess?
Yep.
Okay. If it's okay with the rest of council, I would like this to discussion item F, just discuss a picnic shelter situation just a little bit, if that's okay? Anybody opposed to that? No?
Okay.
Sandra, would you want to discuss the farmer's market too?
The weekend, yeah.
I mean, you won't do?
Sure.
Or we'll put it as G?
That'll be good.
Farmer's market discussion. Okay, with those additions to our regular agenda, for nothing else, would somebody make a motion to approve our modified agenda? Thank you, Jeff. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandra. Any discussion? Are none, all in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Any opposed? So, public comment, anybody signed up? No, sir. Anybody here for public comment? Here none, okay. Approval of the consent agenda, minutes from May eleven, twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from May eleven.
Okay, thank you. I got a first, how about a second? Second. Thank you, Randy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to our regular agenda. Our public hearing to authorize the exchange of property. I may need it. I'm not that good. Oh, that's okay. Sometimes I carry one with me, but not today.
You want me to make a motion to enter, or you want to wait on?
I think we can do that, as we sure can.
I'll make a motion that we move into the public hearing to authorize the exchange of property, resolution twenty-three oh seven.
Thank you, Sandra, second. Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion about going into it? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Sandra, do you feel comfortable sitting in on this part?
We're not voting, are we?
Uh, I don't know.
We are, she should not be as part of the discussion.
She should not, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Well, then back my motion, I know.
Well, you, I think you, it's fine to enter the public hearing, you just can't be involved in the conversation.
Okay, so what we need, though, is we need somebody to make a motion to. So someone to, yeah, someone to do that for us, please.
I'll make a motion to excuse Sandra from this discussion.
Okay, and then I need a second on that. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, so we're in, Sandra's excused, got my cheat sheet, we're ready to roll. That is true, I guess.
That's technically correct, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so why don't you just join us in the crowd, or, or wherever, right here, I don't care where you go. Sure, that makes sense, perfect sense. Okay, so we've got this, we got the hand, it's okay, I guess we're to the point now where we've got conflict staff to present.
Yes, sir, this resolution in front of you this evening, twenty twenty-three dash zero seven would authorize the exchange of property, that is, the town's property, two properties it owns on Banner Farm Road, identified as PIN nine six three one seven two five seven four nine. There is no address assigned, but it is currently vacant, as well as PIN nine six three one six two seven seven two seven, also with no address assigned, being located on Presbyterian Church Road. Uh, that property would be exchanged for property owned by Bradley A. Johnston, identified as PIN nine six four one one three seven nine seven two, located at four zero eight seven Haywood Road. Uh, and in order to satisfy the statutory requirements to complete this property trade, council needs to authorize this resolution.
Okay. Any discussion, question?
Bradley, is it the first one or the second?
It's the one with the dairy farm on it.
Anything else? It is my understanding that we are trading basically appraised value for appraised value, correct?
That's right.
And that property of our appraised for more than this?
It's appraised for slightly less, that was two point four, I believe, and this one's three point four. So there'll be the trade plus cash.
But per acre.
Oh, per acre, yeah.
Per acre, that was valued more.
That's right.
Exact, okay.
That's right.
Gotcha, okay. Anything else? Well, so. Okay, so they be any Africa property owner or interested parties that would wish to present evidence on this, or? Here none? We ain't got that. A public comment from any party in the audience that would like to present? Okay? Okay, so now we'll, yes?
Could you just give us a little detail on the acreage and all?
I can't, yeah, I would have to get some help from staff on acreage numbers and all, but yes, it'd be, I don't see a problem with that. Okay. Oh, so the acreage that's left at Banner Farm, we'll start with that. And I'll get Daniel to help us with that number.
Give me one second to.
Okay.
Get that for you. So the, the town's parcels on Banner Farm Road, there are two parcels. Uh, the first one is eighteen point six five acres. The second one is three point four acres, three point four eight acres for a grand total of twenty-two point one three acres that the town is exchanging. Uh, the parcel that it is acquiring is thirty-five point three four acres.
Anything else anybody's interested in before we move on? Here and there? Okay, so, um, council, have any more discussion or questions before we close the public hearing?
I just think that for people that might be here or might be watching, it's not like we have done this knee jerk or anything, we've been working on this for a long time.
Long time.
Long time. So if we act like we're kind of quiet, it's because we've, we've already kicked a lot of this stuff around, a lot.
Yeah, and when it comes to these things, we're not, we can't talk about them either. Uh, before this, okay. So with that being said, nothing else, no more questions, uh, I need a, somebody to close the public hearing portion of this.
I'll make that motion.
Randy, okay. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, any discussion before we close? Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so now we're down to the decision making of this, and as I read this, a lot of this doesn't apply to us, like consistence, uh, statements and stuff like that on this matter, we just got a the reasonableness of it.
Actually, the, um, the cheat sheet you're looking at is supposed to be generic for multiple things.
Yeah, okay.
For any legislative hearing, for your purposes right now, it's just if you have any further discussion and a vote.
Okay.
And that's all you need, but as long as whomever makes the motion includes the approval of the resolution, please.
Okay. So any more discussion about it before we move on with the resolution?
Mayor Gonzo, I'd just like to offer up the residents of Mills River that while the town has had that Banner Farm Road very, or property for quite a long time. And of course, we've got a master plan for recreation, it is zone industrial, which is where there's a finite amount of industrial land that's still left in Mills River. And of course, the highest and best use of that property would be to put it into, uh, industrial and not necessarily passive recreation, and so I think, uh, we've accomplished several goals that the taxpayer Mills Rivers, uh, want to see, and it's our outline of the plans of plan because we're, one, preserving industrial land for the highest and best use, and secondly, the property adjacent to us is under heavy pressure for development, and obviously, preservation is one of the things that, uh, that's the main thrust of, uh, this council and residents of this town, so by buying the property next door, we're going to protect it from development and, uh, and it goes, I'd say, expand the recreation opportunities for residents. And so it touches on several things, so I'm excited about the opportunity. And having this property is, uh, basically been the difference of, you know, do this transaction or not.
Exactly.
Uh, it was a great investment by this town years ago, and it's going to pay huge dividends, uh, starting this summer, I hope.
Anything else? Well, I would entertain a motion to include the resolution as proposed for this exchange of property, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this council adopt resolution authorizing standard property.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three. Okay, I got first, how about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Randy. Any discussion? I think you just took care of earlier. Okay, so with that being said, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I just have it. When staff gets caught up, we'll go to the, we'll start the public hearing for acquisition of property. Do we need to, uh, do the same thing for Sandra, or she in this one also correct? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so if someone to exclude Sandra from the discussion and voting part of this, since she has a joint in properties.
I'll make the motion that we excuse Sandra from uh, item B on our agenda.
Thank you, Randy, second.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Okay. So someone would put us in the public hearing for the acquisition of the property.
I'll make a motion to enter into public hearing for acquisition of property.
Thank you, Randy, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Nope, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I just have it. So we'll start out with getting some, um, look at that, this. All right, we'll get you to present.
Yes, sir, so, yeah, the last item you had on your agenda, the resolution, it was a state requirement to, to follow through with that. Item B, public hearing for acquisition of land is a, is a local ordinance requirement that we have on the books, so anytime the town wants to acquire land, it needs to hold a public hearing. So there, there are no, um, there's another protocol to follow, this is simply an opportunity for the public to ask questions, for you to provide any feedback you'd like, for you all to ask questions. Uh, but in summary, this is the public hearing for the town to acquire the property that's immediately adjacent, which is thirty, approximately thirty-five acres of land, and then the property next door to that, which is, uh, approximately thirty-four acres of land. Um, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, we got any questions for staff at this point? Okay. All right, we'll go on and we'll, uh, is there anybody African property owner, anybody here that wants to get up and speak? Here none? So we're to, to do, to do. Okay. Public comment, you're allowed to have three minutes of time to come up and give us your feedback on it. Your feelings or whatever, any questions? On that? Anybody? Okay, nobody on it? Okay. So we're back to council discussion and additional questions. Anybody got anything?
My question, be first staff, are we off? Is our target to be on the July agenda for the?
Yes, sir, that's a good question. Uh, for the benefit of the public, I'll just explain the process. Um, as was mentioned previously, in order to make this transaction a possibility, the town, uh, exchange is intending to exchange properties with the property owner. Uh, the other property is intended to, after a down payment, there will be financing associated with that, and that term is uh, two point four one six million dollars over a thirteen year period at five percent uh, for an annual payment of approximately twenty, excuse me, monthly payment of approximately twenty-one thousand dollars. In order to borrow money, in a state of North Carolina, municipalities have to receive approval from the local government commission, uh, which is a, an office of the state treasury's office. Uh, so we have, um, tonight is the last step in preparing that application process, adopting these resolutions. Uh, then we'll get that sent off, it is due next week, and the, uh, local government commission meets on July the eleventh, uh, which will give us time to, um, be heard, get approved, and then follow up with the closing in August.
Okay, and some member of staff and possibly the attorney has to attend that meeting with?
There's no requirement that we attend, uh, we are debating whether or not to do that, at a minimum, we can attend virtually.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. Anything else, any other questions? Here none? Okay, I'd ask to close this portion of our public hearing, motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Randy. Second? Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Right, so now we're back to same thing discussion. Anybody's got any further questions before we make a motion to purchase? Send it on to the commission, all of the above.
I think I'm ready to reiterate this, this adding the
Okay. One more hurdle to jump.
Well, that and other, there's other eyes also making sure that this.
I got you, I want to open up. Okay. Fair enough. Anything else? Here none? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve uh, this acquisition of property next door from Bradley Johnson.
I'll make that motion.
Randy? Second? Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You know, I just have it. When we get caught up, we'll move into our capital improvement plan discussion.
He goes, I'm sorry. You good? Are you caught up?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So for the next two items on your agenda, both items C and D, the capital improvement plan, as well as the uh, twenty-four budget discussion, I don't have a specific presentation planned.
Okay.
But we did not talk in detail at your, uh, at the present presentation earlier this month about specific capital projects, so I wanted to make sure that council had ample time to ask questions, see clarification, provide any initial direction, or final direction, rather, for the capital improvement plan. So, yeah, in your packet you received on page sixty-three is where the capital improvement plan uh, budget starts. And I'll just remind the council that, uh, this year's capital improvement plan and, uh, along with that, the, the operating budget is significantly higher than years past, and that is a correct result of two things. One, the council, um, allocating its two million dollars of its American Rescue Plan Act funding, one point five million of that for land acquisition, and then half a million for farmland preservation. Uh, there are a number of other capital projects, um, that are mostly rollovers from the current fiscal year that we're rolling into the next fiscal year. Um, and capital projects are funded through a couple of different sources. One, are grants, so you'll see in here, um, on the Parks and Recreation, for example, there are a couple of grant sources that, uh, are making up the total for that particular department. Uh, and then the other most more common way to do it is through an appropriation of fund balance, so the, your, your unassigned fund balance is essentially your savings account as a, as an organization. And you don't dip into that for operational needs, that is to say, day-to-day operations, salaries, paperclips, all that sort of stuff. The main purpose of having a, a significant fund balance, as the town does, is to, uh, purchase, complete, acquire capital projects. So when developing the capital improvement plan each year, we use a threshold of five thousand dollars. So anything that costs five thousand dollars, whether it's the purchase of, uh, a piece of equipment, a vehicle, uh, combined, it could be you're purchasing several computers, as is one of the projects next year. Um, and then we, we look to funding sources, in this case, we've got the American Rescue Plan funds, we have grant funds from the state for the playground project, and then we have an appropriation of fund balance to help cover the balance of those projects. Um, so I'll just hit the highlights for those who might be listening, this year's budget, uh, the capital improvement plan is a total of three million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's broken out, uh, the majority of which is, is for parks and recreation. And the majority of that budget, um, is for the acquisition of the land, we, we split that cost between public facilities and parks and recreation. And then the other, um, the other large one, uh, in the budget is the million dollars for public facilities, again, that is the, that is the property acquisition that we've been talking about tonight. Give me one second, pull this up so that folks who are watching can see what I'm talking about. Okay. After the public facilities, we have, uh, six hundred thousand dollars in community development. And that is a combination of the farmland preservation that we've been discussing for the last several months, as well as the first year of funding for a, uh, update to the town's land development code. And then lastly, we have, um, equipment, which is essentially routine maintenance of computer replacement that we try to do every three years. I'm happy to go on to any specific projects that the council might want to discuss.
Anybody got questions on the capital improvement portion?
I just have one quick question regarding transportation. I haven't seen any placeholder for redoing the intent after it's raised by the White one ninety-one, is that planned to scatter in future?
That's a good idea, no, I just had not thought to include that, but it would be wise to do that.
What do you think that would, what do you think our portion of that's going to be, Jeff, when it, when it's all said and done?
I can't remember if I mentioned to you when we were flipping property next door, but, uh, I foresee, because if I come to say the plans I've seen from DOT, of course, it takes out everything on our entrance, you know, the median and whatnot, so it's going to be completely bigger or better. But assuming that we acquire the property next door, seventy acres, that seems like sort of a whole new configuration, whether it's even traffic circle, sending some people toward the library and playground, some people towards, you know, the new properties.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think it'll be our opportunity to sort of figure how we want to make a gateway to this town center.
Okay.
So I don't really know what it's going to cost, it'll be six figures easy.
And.
We've already settled on that with the state, uh, yeah, we, yeah, we've already.
To compensate what we are going to lose, that was five hundred thousand dollars.
No, it was, it was a hundred and five thousand dollars.
So do, do you think it'd be smart for us to start a capital expenditure program for that and set aside twenty-five or fifty thousand a year?
But also we're being compensated a hundred thousand state, or, uh, I thought, a few, three times, I think we actually improve it.
Right.
In some fashion, I don't know what's going to look like, but I just thought, that's a almost certainty in the future, that they are going to widen the highway.
Right.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll see, but I just thought it could be a quarter million dollar project that's going to be in front of us.
Okay.
I think, I think you're right, and we, we should include it in a future year. At this point, I would probably program it into the future years column, simply because the timing for the highway project, while it's supposed, they're, they're letting the project next July, I don't know when they'll be out working in front of town hall.
Okay.
Um, but as, well, I suppose a better approach might be to plan for when they're doing that work, so we could coordinate with them, maybe not, not in the future year. Maybe a twenty-six or a twenty-seven. We, we did, we got the hundred and five thousand for the, for giving them the land to do the project, and they would put back essentially a version of what we have right now. And then we also have Pellville funding that could be used for a portion of that for, for the improvements to the roadway. Um, and then we would, uh, I think it would be wise to, to save some amount of money each year to, to plan for that.
Okay.
I, I think two hundred and fifty thousand is a good starting point, I don't think it's going to be cheaper than that.
Okay. Okay.
When they start on fixing that down there on that end where they did, that's
Uh with, surely we don't know, I don't think.
You're talking about Hooper Lane. We we have been in conversations with the state about that, and there there could potentially be a cost to the town if we wanted to make additional improvements, but we just don't know what that alignment is going to look like. So we really don't have any way of estimating what that, what that might look like.
So just touching on that for a second, Daniel, is our second year in the Pell Bill.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we, we have about three hundred thousand dollars
Mm-hmm.
in that fund, don't we?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Okay.
Okay. Oh.
Okay.
That could be used for something like that.
Perfect.
So.
Perfect. Okay. Any more discussion? Any more questions about this, any of this?
So just touching on that for just a second, Daniel. Um so I assume if we end and we end up with the property over here, we're going to do a master plan probably at that point.
Mm-hmm.
So do you, you foresee putting something like that, starting a column for something like that in our budget?
In in the Parks and Recreation uh section on page seventy-two, we do have funding in there uh for initial improvements to that property. One of the things that we have talked about informally, and I think we'll probably um get some more clarification on this later this evening, is the uh farm market using the shed that's over there. And so we we do have programmed seventy-five thousand dollars. Um that would be available if the council wanted to approve that uh to be used to get that up and running, which would be improvements to that structure, handicap parking spaces, those sorts of things. Um we do, we we will be doing a a master plan next year because we we have done what's called a request for a waiver. Um so the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund has this program. Um they're very big in in acquiring land for parks, and they are sensitive to the fact that property tran- transactions have to happen on a tighter schedule than what their grant schedule is. So we sent a letter in, and we're recently approved for this waiver um program, which means we can go ahead and close on the transaction as planned. But then next spring, we can submit an application to the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund for reimbursement up to half a million dollars. Uh in order to do that, we have to have a master plan in place.
Okay.
Now, I'll caveat that with the master plan doesn't have to look to every single detail of the property, but we need to have like some um some some marquee projects, I guess you could say, and then just have like a future phase earmark somewhere else in the plan. So we are planning to to do that work next year.
Just off the top of your head, do you remember what it was whenever we did the master plan? How much?
Well, the the entire system-wide Parks and Recreation Plan we did was thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
But
That wasn't all for the parks, though.
No, that was the entire planning process. So I think we've budgeted ten thousand dollars, I believe, is is what I plugged in there for the plan. Does that sound reasonable?
I think that was a little low. I thought we updated just a little bit. Um yeah, the last plan, I think, was somewhere around the thirty thousand dollar mark, but that included a system-wide plan and update to this property as well as the Banner Farm Road property. So it should be less than that to do the new property because we're not doing the system-wide plan. Um but yeah, as Daniel mentioned, to be able to be eligible to apply for the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund money, we will have to get that plan in place before we submit an application.
So we're going to have to spend fifteen thousand dollars.
To hopefully get
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
While we're on the Parks page, I'd like to question C about moving the mower, the hundred thousand dollar mower to
Mm-hmm.
FY twenty-five or out. I know at some point we'll need it, but I think we're way better off to rent over there
Mm-hmm.
than attempt to mow.
Mm-hmm.
Um I I'm just trying to like
Yeah.
in my head, cut it off next July first of, you know, one four, so
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that are we going to be is is the plan to try and maintain that with the town now that?
I don't believe that it is to a to a finished mower grade. No, I mean, we we expected that we would. Of course, the landowner for for the dairy is going to be there until the end of the calendar year. So it'll be his responsibility. And then the property next door, we had assumed that we would do some sort of ag lease for that um beginning in January of twenty-four. Uh we will need and then something additional and to what we have to maintain the new green space project that we're we're uh we have, in fact, bids on for you next month. Um so we wouldn't need that four hundred thousand for that, but we would need something um for that finished mower.
They're just thinking, James, that we're not going to be we're not going to be maintaining anything over there for probably a few years. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could move a couple of things and add ten grand to our revenue side of the spreadsheet and rent the whole thing out. I mean, it's it's a pasture and a landfill.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I mean, because it's going, it's, it's realistically going to take a lot of time before the town can ever build that property out.
Yeah.
So, well, it's going to be a while.
Mm-hmm.
But we're, we've got options if we got the property.
Right.
So I don't, I don't see laying out a lot of money for equipment if we're just going to lease the property that
Right.
for agricultural purchases.
For Nicole, what are we in desperate need of? Machinery-wise to take care of what we got here, plus these driveways that's going to be feeding into what will be ours, that we'll be keeping up next spring. He's going to take care of it till December thirty-first, but
So I think the, the big need for next year is if as he mentioned, we got our bids back today for the, the managed meadow, the graded meadow back there. So once that work is complete, so if we stick to the timeline that we bid out on, by September, we'll have grass growing back there that will need to be cut. So by September of twenty twenty-three, we'll either need to contract that out, so we'd need money for that, or we'd have to get equipment where we can do it ourselves.
Okay.
Um as far as this property, the driveway, so again, I would see contracting that out. I I wouldn't see, but you know, he's been using, you know, it's been the shared use, and he's got a grader. I don't foresee us going to buy a grader to be able to maintain those roadways.
Okay.
And and things like that. But I think the, back to the question of obviously putting it in ag lease, short-term is probably a really good solution to help us maintain that property. Um but how much of that property are we going to put into ag lease and how much is left? And I think a lot of that will come back to the farm market discussion.
Yeah.
And some of those other things that need to happen immediately. So I think it's going to be very dependent on how quickly we're trying to do what and how much we're going to be able to put in ag lease that someone else can maintain that property until we're ready to develop.
Okay. So I guess, back to that question, what are we going to need? Do we need something that we don't have now come September?
We will need some sort of finish mower that we can attach to our current tractor at the minimum.
So should we twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand?
I think twenty-five would be fine.
Our tractor's big enough to handle it?
Yeah, I've priced out. Um it's been a I think I priced it out last fall, and it was about twenty-one then. This year's model, so you can expect a little percentage on that.
So we do have money, you know, set aside for that in the budget?
Well, we would just reduce this number.
Yeah, from a hundred down.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay with everybody?
Sounds great.
Sounds great, they said. Sounds great. Okay, what else we got? Anybody got anything else? Here none? Okay.
So we're just talking about the capital.
We're getting, we're getting
Section that.
We're, we're just trying to get the capital behind us.
Yeah.
On the playground accessory stairs, slide and sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
Is that for down here at the bottom of the bank?
Yes, that's the project that we got the grant approved for.
Okay, and does this include the grant?
Yes.
Yeah.
So yeah, the, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but of the three hundred and fourteen thousand, about two hundred and
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three thousand of that, we will get reimbursed in grant money.
Okay.
And then about forty thousand of that will come out of Pell Bill money. So it's less than twenty thousand dollars. I think that is, it will actually be taxpayer money.
That's seventeen thousand or something like that, I remember.
Okay, we're getting a bargain.
Yeah.
That is on the revenue side, right?
Yeah.
Grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so well, we can get to it when we go back to the actual budget, but on the very front page on the revenue, you'll see a grant one item for two sixty-three, and that's what that grant is. So we have to, just because of the way that the budget laws are written, we have to show the full expenditure, even though we're being reimbursed for it. We have to, it's a reimbursable grant, so we have to show the full expenditure on our books.
Anything else on capital improvement part, budget discussion? Hear nothing? Sandra, you're looking hard to get something.
No, I'm just
Okay, okay.
It's a little rotten.
Okay, all right. So if uh that since it's this discussion, we can move on to D portion. Financial year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget discussion. Now, James, what you got?
Can I, can I jump in?
Yes, sir.
We'll get to James. I need to, I need to clarify a couple of things. One, I I misunderstood the farm market request at the last meeting and uh misunderstood their two thousand dollar increase as a two thousand dollar request. So I shorted them about fourteen thousand dollars in the budget, but um the the total number would be sixteen thousand, three sixty. Um and I had put the budget something like two thousand dollars, so that's, that's, that's not reflected in the budget document you have, but I just wanted to let you know that that mistake was made and has been, will be corrected.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before I get them started?
I have two extra copies of this. We're going y'all, anybody wants it or wants to?
The most updated one, the one in the clear packet or the staple one?
The clear packet, yeah.
You give me the outdated one?
No. I only had so many covers.
What pages? Oh, really?
No, you you can feel free to let me know.
Yeah, let him know if you found any, just because. Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, I found quite a few. The numbers uh changed by about twenty-five hundred dollars, but that was it.
Paul James is looking. Anybody got any just general questions about the budget?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So Daniel, can you give me treat me like I'm, this is my first day ever here.
Mm-hmm.
Tell me what a revenue neutral, give me a definition.
Sure. Uh revenue neutral tax rate means that is the rate at which we would collect the same amount of revenue that we collected the prior year when you take into account um average annual growth. I think it's the simplest way I can put it, and inflation.
Okay. I'm okay right now.
Okay.
Okay, who's next? What you got, James?
So while we're on that, is my math from somewhat close that if I put in the debt for the new land
Mm-hmm.
of two-ten with, sticking with eighteen cents, a hundred, are we increasing our town's income by three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars-ish? After, after we're, we're doing, paying the debt.
I came up with three thirty-two.
I came up with three seventy-four, five thirty-two, but we're going with yours.
And then, and and that figure includes the debt payment or no?
Mine didn't.
Mine without the debt is five hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay.
Or then revenue neutral versus eighteen cents. And that took off the debt that would be owed.
Yeah.
So, so the land payment is one is a penny and two tenths of our revenue.
Yeah.
Is our land payment.
Uh in the, yes, approximately, yes. That one, one penny is two hundred and nine thousand dollars. Um and the payment for this year is two-ten. Next year will be two sixty-one, I think, because there's two more.
So what I came up with, if we just add our land payment to our revenue neutral rate, I came up with sixteen point four one cents.
Mm-hmm. So the, let me share my math, and we'll see how we all compare. So
We'll have to get somebody here smarter than all of us, figure this out for us.
On the, on the property tax side of things, this is just the town's eight cents. I'm not factoring in the the fire department's ten cents, but on the town's tax eight cents, revenue uh year-over-year is increased by four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that takes into account the collection rate of ninety-eight percent. Um and then, so that was the number I came up with over year-over-year. And then the tax, excuse me, the, the debt payment for the year is two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. Um which would leave a balance of two thirty-ish of that number.
So this is just me thinking out loud here. I'm just going to talk to you.
Yeah.
And um so everybody in Towne Mill River and Harrison County, of course, is going to get hit with a tax injury.
Right.
We're buying this property over there. I understand
Mm-hmm.
that one point two cents could increase our uh on top of our revenue neutral rate.
Mm-hmm.
We're going over and above that if we, if we if we adopt the budget as you recommended.
Mm-hmm.
So that's pretty steep. I mean, that's going to be about a thirty percent increase for residents of Towne Mill River, just on the town, towns taxes.
Right, right. That's right.
That's, that's pretty dang steep. Uh I would like to see us just tack on our land payment uh over last year's budget. And and again, that's just me talking. I think, I think everybody needs a little bit of a break on, especially on the reevaluations and stuff. It's just, it's over the top at the county level, and I don't want to make it over the top for the, I know they adjusted their rate uh quite a bit, but that's yet to be determined if they're not going to add back some of that. So I just want to open that discussion up for everybody here.
So what's the magic number you're talking seventeen cents?
Sixteen and a half is what I'm
Sixteen and a half.
So let me, let me provide a little bit of a breakdown on how we got to where we are with the budget. So in addition to the debt payment, um I've broken out several different expenditures here. So we are increasing the capital reserve account going from three-quarters of a penny to parks and three-quarters of a penny of town hall to a full penny to parks. Uh and that is increasing the expenditures by a hundred and forty-two thousand. The debt payment is two-ten. The admin uh department for operational needs um is, is increased year-over-year by seventy-eight thousand. The contract with the sheriff's office went up by sixty-eight. Um planning is twenty-five. The EIF is the Economic Investment Fund. So that's the request of the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development. They received twenty thousand dollars last year, and they're seeking fifty thousand dollars this year. And then uh we are requesting a new position in the Parks Department, a maintenance supervisor. That eighty thousand dollars is is salary plus benefits. That's not all salary. Um the Parks Department, again, just operational increases to seventy-four thousand. Uh we're requesting a new position for a deputy tax collector. Um salary and benefits is sixty-eight thousand. And then that last one at eighty, roughly eighty-three thousand is, is um what we're not taking out of fund balance to cover to cover capital projects. So if you, if you hold that out of the, the, the revenue number, you would, you could reduce the rate, I don't know, by a quarter of a penny and and get rid of that immediately. And then the next thing that you could look at, I think if you want to lower the the tax rate, uh we'll be reducing the capital reserve earmark from the increase that it is now to just taking it back down to three-quarters of a penny or even reducing it further because that, that is, that is money that we're saving for future projects. So if, if the idea would be to provide some relief to taxpayers, um that money is, is, that's in the, in the that money is, is, that's in the, in the reserves is, is sitting there right now for future use. So they're not like you're taking away something by not putting into it. You just wouldn't be saving as much. The other thing that I would suggest is instead of funding the EIF at thirty thousand, you just keep that at the same at twenty thousand. And then that offset from the fund balance would, would get you easily down to seventeen cents. Um, I haven't done the math on anything more than that, but I, I certainly could.
So how many, how many new positions have you requested for this year's budget?
One and a half. We had a, we had a part-time position, uh, this current year for the administrative assistant upfront. And we're requesting that be committed to, converted to a full time to be split between admin and, and tax collections with the idea being that person would be trained to replace our tax collector in a couple of years when she decides to retire. And then the maintenance position is, is brand new. And that would be someone to oversee the, the park staff, uh, the maintenance staff. And that's, that's a brand new position. So that's a full, that's the one.
So how common is it, Daniel, to bring somebody in to start working toward someone else's retirement?
Uh, it's a, it's succession planning. I mean, that's, that's just we don't have enough staff to be able to say, okay, you're gonna be taking this person's place in two years. We would be replacing somebody.
But I guess I've got a little bit of heartburn about that because if you came in, if somebody came in and stole you away as our town manager, you would give the town a couple of weeks' notice and you would go to that position. And the town would have to, the town would have to make do
Right.
With what we'd, what we would have at the time. So why would this position be any different?
Well, we need the position right now, um, for administrative assistant duties. Our, our clerk is also planning to retire in the not-too-distant future. And so our deputy clerk is training to assume that role. And so this, this position that would be part-time in admin and part-time in tax collections uh, would be to allow the deputy clerk to continue training and taking on more clerk duties. As she gets closer to that full position. And then the same thing with the tax collector, as that person nears retirement, the deputy clerk, deputy tax collector position would take on more and more of that role until eventually they would be, they would slide into that, that position full-time.
And by state law, we have to have a tax collector, correct?
If you want to collect taxes in-house. But, but a lot of cities in, in Henderson County, the county actually collects taxes and then remits it back to the municipality.
So it's my understanding that City of Hendersonville doesn't have a tax collector, correct?
I don't know that for sure. I would, I would assume so.
And, and that is true. They used to have one and now the county collects for them and withholds a percentage.
Do you know what that percentage is?
The last time I saw a percentage that one of the municipalities was paying, I wanna say it was half a cent, but that may have been like ten years ago.
Replacing multiple years down the road. Based on it's in here as possibly in two years, I just keep trying to fiscal year, fiscal year. One year. So it, it gives me heartburn. So does the is the maintenance supervisor, is that like a lateral position to Nicole or the programmer or is this somebody who's, is the maintenance supervisor gonna be somebody who's watching? Three or four people?
That, that's it. They would be supervising the day-to-day operations of the park and specifically those three individuals. And then, of course, that would be a working position, so they would be doing whatever tasks need to be accomplished.
But is that maintenance? Or Muncie's maintenance service? Doing most of the mowing?
Uh, they're doing, I guess about half of it right now. Do you know?
They are at the moment because we do have a position that's vacant. And so with the current staff we have, um, I think it was two years ago, council decided that they wanted to move all maintenance in, in-house. And so we no longer contracted that out and we started bringing in our own staff, but because we have a vacant position. Um, and the original intention of that position was to take our vacant position and transition that position to the supervisor and not add a new. But then when the new property acquisition, that's a lot more property to manage. Um, so the, the I guess the third maintenance technician position, we don't have, I think it's only half a year. Is that correct, Daniel? And depending on what we decide with we may not need that. If we're leasing that out completely for a while, that's something we would probably hold off on um, to fill that third position. Um, but I do think it is really important that there's, you know, while I'm up here managing grants and doing these other things, I can't oversee the day-to-day operations of what's happening out there. We do our, you know, weekly stuff and check-ins, but um, I think we would be much more efficient and we'd be much more better suited if we had someone who was on the ground doing the day-to-day work while supervising those technicians.
I agree. Sort of. Would we not save a ton of money, though, having somebody mowing blow, hiring that all out, getting away from whatever we decided a year ago, two years ago? And contracting it out?
Yes, yeah, there is a cost savings, which I think you lose. And I think what this, uh, the previous council got frustrated with is when you contract with somebody, you can't always do it when you want it. And so we, what we have done is we've split the area, so the areas that are time sensitive, so our athletic fields. You know, we, we need it mowed. There's a game. We have to make sure that's mowed and ready and prepped and ready to go that. Um, so that's how we have split it currently with the contractor. But again, the previous council felt that, um, they wanted that with all the property to make sure we could be a little more responsive on keeping things up and neat rather than the once a week, whenever they can get here. So, so yes, but it would be a cost savings.
I'm not trying to argue, Nicole, but so how long has the position been vacant that we have in the maintenance department?
Uh, I think two months.
Have you been having trouble filling that position?
Well, we decided.
People come and go through there, right?
No, uh, so this new position was added. We've had two positions for a while, and this was the position that was added when council decided to bring all maintenance in-house. Um, and so that she, she was in this position for about a year and she found a better paying job, so unfortunately she left. Um, but with that, we decided to hold off to see if we could get it reclassified to get that supervisor position. Which again was the intention, um, before that property was a done deal was to just take, you know, we already had three positions, but just elevate one to a supervisor position, the vacant position.
So you hire me as a supervisor, do I have to mow?
Yes.
You're gonna fire Muncie's maintenance service that next day?
Wouldn't fire them, I would.
Let them go.
Their, well, their, their contract has a, it's a two-week notice is written in the contract. And, um, the, our current maintenance service knows that this was a temporary fill-in. We like to keep in just for situations like this. I've kept them on contract, um, just to have something like, again, we lose a position and that they've been willing to step in and they've been really good to work with us knowing it, it's a temporary situation.
What else you got?
Are we talking about the nonprofit funding? Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that money is still sitting there.
Yeah, we can talk about it whenever, whenever you'd like. I think bef, before we leave this, this discussion, if, if if you want to give me the direction to lower the tax rate, tell me that and I'll, I'll, I'll work on the numbers.
Well, if it was me standing up, sitting up here as the dictator, I would say lower our tax. And I'm just one of five, so.
I have a, one other question in regards of, in my head, trying to come up with how you lower the tax rate. Contingency. Line item. Went up substantially.
We, we do that as a percentage of the budget each year, and with the larger budget, the contingency went up. What is different, though, over prior years is we added contingency to the rest of the departments, which is something we've never done. Um, I don't know what that figure is off the top of my head, but we did, we did add that to all the departments.
Yeah, cause the total's a hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred. So I know you need some miscellaneous funds, but that's uh, point seven three. In my head, I'm trying to figure out how you lower the tax rate and
Yeah.
Not like what I asked you the other day, not think nearsighted about it. Think nearsighted as far as it's a calendar year, but don't think so nearsighted that there is gonna be major expenses coming up.
Cause being on council for going on sixteen years, I would say that just keep in mind you lower it today is one thing and it's easy to do, but you talking about something hard to do is when you jack it back up. So you keep that in mind, too, if you're planning on being in these seats a few years down the road, cause I'm not bashful to say it. I've had to be here and talk the others into going just a little bit more. So as my witness, just go a little bit more. We're gonna have to bite the bullet right now. We'll go middle of the road a little bit more and let it play out over five or six years instead of go up every two or three years. Again, and again, and again. So, and I mean, I understand it, how, where everybody's at, and, uh, I don't wanna sit here and make a killing on it, but we need to be, we need to just be uh, fair about it to everybody, us included, trying to run a town.
Uh, there's a lot of unknown unknowns we're talking about. We haven't done much of a band of farm, but maintaining fifty acres, we're talking about maybe a hundred twenty. Part or all deal falls through, then next year we can lower the tax rate accordingly, but, um, to the mayor's point. At this point, with so many unknown unknowns ahead of us, uh, I have consternation about, you know, rushing to lower the rate, only to find out that there's clamoring for let's, you know, let's create new opportunities, let's develop this property. And we're like, well, we're sort of hemmed in with the tax rate and I'll generate some revenue and they'll go right back and raise taxes, so. Uh, I don't wanna raise the taxes, period, but I certainly, uh, awesome drain pot, but, uh, I just think it'd be wise to, uh, to keep in mind that, that we can lower it anytime without much pain, but raise it eight, many years from now, a few years from now, it's really a harder task.
So Daniel, just off the top of your head, a Mills River taxpayer, if we kept this eighteen cent tax rate, how much would the average Mills River taxpayer percent-wise tax bill go up?
That would be the same as the tax value, thirty-three percent is what I think the average.
So we're looking at a thirty-three percent increase in Mills River residents' taxes. If we keep this eighteen cents.
Which that is, that's never been done before.
I think we can do better than that.
Like what, what?
Not in, not in my council period. But if you go statewide and you look it up, you won't find tax rates like we got in municipalities of twenty-two square miles. No, we're in the state for our rate.
But in September, when somebody gets their tax bill and they say, my gosh, my taxes in Mill River went up thirty-three percent. There's gonna be some people that are angry.
What you need, uh, but, but where, where I explain it to them is we collect and help me with this, Daniel. I know it's my understanding that the, the fire departments, the county's gonna maybe drop them from eleven to ten cents.
That was the request that the fire department put forward.
But we don't know yet. So we collect that money for them, turn around and hand them a hundred percent of the collection rate of that to them. Then we've got a contract with the sheriff's department to provide services out here to keep everybody safe and be there at a minute's notice. That portion goes directly to them. Which leaves us around how many cents?
Oh, two and a half.
Two and a half cents.
Three cents, maybe.
So when you do the two and a half cents that we're sitting here arguing about, our two and a half cents, thirty percent of two, thirty, thirty-three percent of two and a half cents ain't much.
I get it. I do. But I think every little bit helps.
But if you're also arguing about that small percentage, then yeah, then I'm gonna dig my boots in deeper to the sand on, on more positions. We don't need it. We're, 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 we're small. We're talking about a, a small amount. I mean, then, then what am I, what am I giving back to the residents? More question I'm, I'm asking.
Okay. Well, my argument back in the day was, you know, that Fletcher wasn't coming across the river. Then the next thing you know, Continental Tevis is going up there and they annexed them in. So they did come across the river. Fletcher's tax rate is forty-something. It was forty-two. Yeah, so it's, uh, over double what ours is. So if you own a piece of property on this side of Continental Tevis, you're paying eighteen cents to be in this town. Continental Tevis is paying forty-two cents. If you look over there, everything on this side in Mills River is prosperous, not just because of that, but the other side is moved on. And you're seeing that steel case, you're seeing that everywhere over through there. So, and I bring this up at the LGC, our tax rate is one reason. And the incentive package we give them is another reason they wanna be in Mills River. Because we're not talking about two hundred thousand dollars to them people. We're talking about two hundred, five hundred million to them people. To provide us with jobs and, uh, good location for, for their employees to live close by, maybe not right in Mills River, but nearby. That's my argument with it. I know it seems high. And I know you wanna give back, but I'm more the type to collect this and try to give them more out of it. Figure out a way to give them more. Not, not cut services. Don't ever cut services that you've already got provided. You wanna get your butt kicked when you go to the grocery store, take something away from them. Cause they won't realize that tax cut until they get their next bill in September. You know, but you're, you're gonna have to cut it ahead of that to get ahead of this, uh, budget. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, it does.
You take, you know, you, you know what Van, uh, Van Wengen is? Is established business. If you move it just across over there on the other side of the river, you're hit with all that. You'd rather be here. The residents had rather be here than there. From a tax standpoint.
I agree.
Okay.
Then I'm still on the let's not frivolously spend what we have. And let's legally save it for the bar. I mean, the contingency is very high. Let's, let's, let's make the, what was the parks one from three quarter to one? Make it one and a quarter.
Let me just, one quick clarification on contingency. That is a very high number, bottom line. Um, but the reason that it is separated by department, it's, it's a smaller percentage in each department is because the point of that contingency is when you have an overage in a department and you pull from that contingency, you can't pull from one account, one department to another department without coming back to the council. And not that, that we can't do that, and we've done that plenty of times in the past, but it's, it's a clerical headache to, to move five thousand dollars from, you know, parks to planning, uh, to cover, I don't know, uh, a mailing or whatever.
Yeah, but.
But you're right, in some.
Five thousand dollars. You, you move five thousand dollars a lot and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars in the administrative.
And administrative has been higher in the past because it covers this building in, in large part. And, you know, and, and this year we, we had to replace the fire alarm system, which was a healthy expenditure. Um, and the building is, you know, it's eleven, twelve years old now, so it's, it's, things are breaking.
Sure. And you gotta think about one other thing, too. It'll be curious to see what the tax collection rate is gonna be with this new evaluation. We're strong at roughly around ninety-seven plus percent every year, correct?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight or better. Ninety-eight or better, so we'll see if it creates any hardships, you know, with the increase.
And James, I'm, I'm not arguing with your point about contingency, it certainly is a lot of money, I'm just, I just wanna clarify the accounting behind it.
So, um, any more on this right here, or we got any more discussion? We need to take a little five minute break here, but I'd like to get through this if we can.
Can I ask one more quick? I'll be quick. If, how long would it take you if we gave you a tax rate? How long would it take you to plug numbers in right back?
Uh, I could have it to you probably by Wednesday.
Would you rather do it that way, or would you rather just go through and try to pick in each ever, each and every line?
I would rather you give me a tax rate you want to get to and let me figure out how to get there.
Okay, quick break.
Say what, let's take a break, we'll come back and try to figure out what that number is right fast to giving, and then we'll come back, okay? Everybody's welcome back, back to your seats, I think we got everybody coming back. We'll get started again here. Okay, when we left a few minutes ago, uh, Daniel was suggesting that we try to work together to create him a. Stents per hundred number to work his budget to, so.
My preference is eighteen cents.
Your preference is eighteen cents. Uh, James, you're all about the numbers, where are you at? Um, Daniel. It, I'm sure it would be easy enough for you, I guess, to, could you tell us with the new evaluation numbers? How many cents we're gonna be collecting between ten and eleven for the fire department most likely? Then how much would it cost cent wise for the new proposed budget for the sheriff's contract?
You mean in terms of like a penny increase?
Well, is it costing us five cents or four and a half, six cents with the new evaluation, that's the trick.
It would be approximately four and a half cents, I would, I believe is the number, you know, one second.
Like four and three quarters, something like that.
So basically, if, if, let's just say if they go with ten. We're almost at, we're fourteen point seven five just to take care of those two, basically those two lineups. Before we get into anything of ours. So keep that, please keep that in mind, as you evaluate where we need to be, and that's based on the new evaluation itself.
I'm happy to do whatever the board wants to do.
Cuz we're at fourteen, seven, five with those two things and we're talking about we're at eighteen.
Well, if you dropped it seventeen and we looked at the number. That might help.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm, I'm happy to do whatever the majority of the board wants to do and it would be.
I would like to see Daniel's published uh, revenue renewal rate plus our, our land payment. And then the, the six percent for the employees that he had plugged in. And I'd like to see the rest of it, we could discuss, there's some stuff on the nonprofit thing I'd like to talk about.
I, I agree with that, I would, I would, I'm a, don't wanna give a number, I would like to see what that comes.
What that, what that standard number comes back to.
On the backend, if you don't increase staff and do your best to. Put it in as close as you, you know how.
Was that how y'all do it over there? I'm just asking, I mean, I gotta know, y'all run it that tight, I gotta know.
I, I absolutely do.
Okay, okay, that's, that's my fair, fair answer.
And Daniel, just. For my understanding, on page thirty-three.
I'm getting there. Yes.
So, at the bottom, the total of ten employees for the twenty twenty-three. And right beside it is recommended twenty-three, twenty-four budget is, there's. Is my math wrong, or is that three additional employees?
Maybe my math is wrong, hang on one second. Math is wrong, recent ones, but. Yes, I was off by one, so it's eleven to thirteen. And again, that's converting.
So it's not one and a half employees, it's two. Is that what you said?
That would be twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right, that's the recommendation.
Well, we.
This budget is right.
Though the, in, in the current year, we had a part-time positions, that would be half of an employee. And then so if we move that forward, that would be a half of employees, we'd be sitting at eleven and a half. But I'm suggesting we convert that to full time, so that would be one full-time position. And then another full-time position for the parks supervisor position. So you go from.
So it's not one and a half employees, it's two employees.
Yes, we'd be adding two full-time positions.
But one is, one he had in there, but no longer works for us anymore. Okay, so that's where he's coming up with the half.
But before it was one and a half, you just said one and a half employees when I asked before, but it's actually two, but.
When you look at it in terms of our bottom line number, we'd be going from eleven full-time to thirteen part-time, so yes, it is, it is two. But again, it's.
But last year's budget would have recognized that person we no longer have today. Correct?
That's right.
Okay, yes.
Any more questions, discussion?
I'm sorry? The only benefit that they're eligible for is that North Carolina four fifty-seven B retirement program. I don't think any of them can um, participate, do they? And that doesn't cost the town anything, that's just an optional payroll deduction they can take if they want, otherwise no.
You good? James, anything else earmarked in there, noted?
Oh, I was doing the same math on the numbers, if that's. We got to that.
It's one of those, one of those typos.
Jeff, you got anything?
Great, I'm so sorry, James, what was, what was your request a moment ago? It was a debt payment plus, what did you say?
He basically echoed, if I'm not mistaken, Randy's.
And no new positions.
What the tax rate would look like with current staff plus the six percent. Whatever.
Plus the debt payment.
Plus the debt payment.
And the six percent.
Contingency. Just only take off the two positions.
And, and just so that we're fully transparent here, when the, the debt payment calculation, I'm gonna use what will be the payment for a full twelve months.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
And moving the lawn mower. That's seventy-five grand that I could.
It doesn't affect the tax rate though, because that's coming out of your unassigned fund balance, so that's just a one-time purchase. So that, that would be part of the unassigned fund balance transfer. We don't.
earmarked for a hundred grand.
It is, but it would.
Spare seventy-five grand sitting out there.
Well, we just leave it back and, this just stays in fund balance.
Yeah, so if you look, if you look on the, uh, excuse me. On the spreadsheet that I've got on the screen right here. So you see where this twelve fifty-six, one seventy-one number is? So if we take out that mower, this number will be reduced by seventy-five thousand dollars. That's not an operational budget though, that's the transfer, it's like going in your savings account, taking out twenty-five to buy the mower. And then never having to pay for it again, of course, the maintenance, but.
Because that's a capital expense.
That's right, yeah. Now, what it, what it would do by reducing that, um, it would lower the, the transfer from fund balance, which would leave you more in your savings account basically.
Don't help your tax rate, Daniel, that do.
But and help confirm to me on mileage rate, that's. That's ten dollars per every hundred thousand dollar worth of property value, is that correct?
I think that's.
A hundred thousand dollar house, a penny taxes.
Yes, I believe that is correct. It's a penny per hundred dollars, so times ten would be, yeah, that's correct.
The reason I asked the question is kinda like, alright, if we. If we're slugging it out over seventeen cents versus eighteen cents, a penny. Average home was at three, four hundred thousand dollars, I thought about thirty-four dollars, thirty to forty dollars. A year. If we eighteen versus one or seventeen or sixteen and a half. Forty-five dollars. In my mind, it's just like, I think as a town, we can give more than forty-five dollars, thirty dollars worth of benefits. In terms of expanded program for recreation, recreation facilities, better enforcement, better ordinances that are tailored to the. Demand of the growth that we're having, we're having in this town, so just, you know. I'm sensitive cuz I'm taxpayer too, but you know, when we get right down to it, for the, what I call people, build class that have, you know, two, three. Four hundred thousand dollar piece of property, a house and a little bit of land, uh, talking about, can we deliver? On thirty bucks worth of additional services for what we have planned and that's in this budget. I think we can, so that's why I hate to see ourselves up over a penny or two. Cuz I don't know that that's gonna make or break a household, I mean, that's not even a tank of gas. That we can deliver on additional expense and all of our eight cents have to show. What they're getting for their eight cents that didn't. I just wanna confirm that, in my mind, that nap is right. Have tank of gas to a household that's gonna hurt her percent. But then let's, let's put that money towards something that we can say, hey, your thirty bucks got you on.
We can do that, I'm all about doing it.
We're walking through. Point, I would say that we can cut this piece of pie a whole lot different ways, I just wanna make sure we have an eighteen cent pie that we're cutting out of and then. But you know, positions or contingencies of capital purchases like equipment, you know, I'm all for, you know, revisiting all those, any or all those things, but I just. A real hesitation about uh, cutting the taxes, given the environment we're in and the big thing that we're thinking on.
So I'm sorry for flipping around the spreadsheets, but I, I did develop this uh, anticipation of the budget presentation that I might illustrate. If your property was valued at a hundred and fifty and you multiplied it by one point three percent, or excuse me, one point three, which is a thirty percent increase. Your new tax bill would be a hundred and fifty-six dollars, so an annual increase of thirty-six dollars and three dollars monthly. So you can just, I just ran, pulled some examples. Um, most of the properties are gonna be probably in this range right here.
Daniel, I don't dispute these numbers.
I know, I'm just trying to illustrate Jeff's point.
But what I'm saying is when people open that bill and see the Town and Mills River and our little logo there. And it's another ten to eleven cents on top of this eight cents. They don't look for anybody but this body right here. Why'd you raise my taxes? And I, I'm sympathetic to that. I don't like paying taxes anymore than anybody. But uh.
Well, we really didn't raise your taxes, it's kinda reevaluated.
I understand.
And I don't disagree, Randy, I just wanted to illustrate Jeff's point.
I get it.
The thing is, and I'll tell you as a, from a builder's standpoint too, probably nobody in here would sell their home for what the county's got valued at. Even today's number. Cuz I can tell you, Shannon Gaunt, or nobody else could rebuild it for what they got to value that. Not new, new money anyway, not new, new construction.
Still don't like stroking that check any easier. Can we talk about the nonprofits?
Absolutely.
What page is that on anyway, I can't even find that. I had it marked, but then I lost. That bites you back, can't it?
It is on page seventy-seven of your, of your um, booklet. And I'll just remind the board that the, the copy you have in front of you does not accurately reflect the farm market request that's in the spreadsheet and televisions in front of you.
The last, last year, whenever the housing assistance uh. Corporation came to us, they had projects lined up to, to do, and I asked the lady this year. If they had anything lined up, and she said they had no one on the waiting list for Town and Mills River this year. I don't like funding something if it's not, I don't want to send taxpayer money to the housing system corporation. For them to just sit on and wait on a project for Town and River, so I'd like to strike that.
And, and I'll just remind the board that these are reimbursements, um, we don't, we don't just give them the money, but point taken.
So you'd like to see that just taken out?
I would like to see that taken out, I, I don't want to see the town funding something unless they have a, a list of people and projects to do. Within the Town and Mills River.
We don't have those finalized, yes, so they're not in the budget.
They're not in the budget, that we just got that money set aside.
Economic.
Oh, no, no, you don't have Brittany in him? Okay, yeah, he's got those.
What page is that then?
I think it's more toward the front just a little bit, I mean, not to front, but ahead of this a little.
I had all this marked.
That's like in economic development or?
Yeah, yeah, it's on page fifty-six of your document. Let me do it a few times.
Question on that is, that's what significantly cuz she wants us to find. Interesting land. All the other nonprofits, we ask that that money is spent in the town. Are we gonna have that same rule for them, because that's their park in Henderson County?
Yeah, uh, we have not uh, reached an agreement on that, I mean, that, that, that's what they requested, but. To your point and what has been council's reservations in the past is the way that they're structured, that money could be spent anywhere in Henderson County for that purpose.
Yeah, listen, listening to that spiel before, that's the only way it would work for them is uh, to just.
They're not willing to.
To assign it directly to, no, it's just impossible almost because of the expense of that land. Wherever it's at in Henderson County.
So do you wanna lower that back down to the, the original request with twenty thousand?
I find it powerful only because the Town and Mills River's been, we see the lion's share of benefits, but they do, what we put in. So how we reap. And also we have resources available land or did, so I. We're not even paying our fair share as far as I'm concerned in that respect, so I wanna be fully supportive. We gotta start cutting uh, to the bone on things and maybe that's why things hasn't go, but. I, like I said, I find it a little more. Powerful, the word I use, just only because uh, we've been, the Town and Mills River's been a, the benefactor of a lot of their work. Powerful, the word I use, just only because, uh, we've been, the Town Mill River's been a, the benefactor of a lot of their work.
So if we're taking the straw poll, I'd like to put my one saying in. Roger, always, and this is something I totally agree with Roger on, doing, having a business or an industry in Town Mill River is a benefit for that industry because of our tax rate. So I don't see us taking tax money from, from people in Town Mill River and funding it for. Areas in other parts of the county. Because our tax rate is much more beneficial for the company to be here in Town Mill River than it is the city of Hendersonville or the city of Fletcher. So I'd like to see it come back to the twenty, uh, that it was last year myself.
Is that not like a, a little bit of a fair negotiation tactic that there isn't draw to Mill River because of the tax rate, but because we're. So picky with what it could. Not increase our tax rate?
I, I think it's a, I think it's a, a selling point for, for any industry that Brittany might bring, looking at. If they're looking at a site in Fletcher or, or the city of Hendersonville, it would be a no-brainer if they had a site in Mill River, which one they would go to.
And, but I will say this, you know, Mills River has, we're, we're about out of that kind of lane. And all the other, the county, the city, the other municipalities, not all, but some of the other municipalities. Have helped in this process to get us what we've got. So I just think it would be fair as ethically to continue to contribute. To help possibly some of the other locations prosper from it as well. Probably not to the fifty thou, uh, fifty thousand a year level, but, you know. Is that, is that line item twenty-three from last year, was that fifteen and five? That's what it was, wasn't it, fifteen for them, five for the?
Yeah, yeah.
So. Yeah, so, you know, I would. I would do, I wouldn't want to do any less than what we did last year. You know, I would, you know, I don't think it would hurt us to help that organization just a little bit with what could potentially come over next to the airport.
I mean, I could go the twenty and five for the E I F, is that what you call it?
So give them twenty and so, uh, let them know that I would be going back to their land.
Like we did fifteen and five.
Okay.
Think, I think, uh, when Brittany presented it, it was. Twenty and then thirty, and the thirty was based off of because the city of Hendersonville or other places was doing thirty, what's their, what's the city of Hendersonville's? Just do a percentage of it?
I don't know, I don't know what that number would be in there.
So the, um. Hendersonville contributes fifty thousand to the E I F. Fletcher does twenty-five thousand. Laurel Park does. Twenty-five hundred, Flat Rock does not contribute. And then Henderson County is the other, um, the large public contributor, eighty-two thousand five hundred. And then they get grants and some private contributions.
So we're, we're talking about thirty thousand?
It would be a total of fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Her request was fifty thousand. Yeah, currently we're at fifteen and then five.
So Shannon, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was your idea years and years ago to fund the. Ag H C at the same rate that we funded.
To try to keep it the same rate. But the problem has been since then, the ag is falling off, we don't have it. As much to support as we did back then. You know, we had all these Mills River farms that we thought we could get that organization up and going and be able to help them succeed and. They've kind of just sold out.
I mean, it's all, it's all some now.
Of course, oh, yeah.
Twenty-three, but I mean, if we go to the fifty.
Well, I'm not, yeah, don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting fifty, I'm not suggesting fifty, I could say twenty and ten, twenty-five and five. Um, one reason I say. Twenty-five and five is because they're trying to keep their staff and personnel, which they're going to have to have for that organization to succeed. And if they lose a couple of grants or anything, they're going to have to cut their staff back. And, uh, there's still some good potential in Mills River in the near future. That, uh, we definitely need all those folks on our side.
So next budget year or any of the tax incentives that have been. Approved in previous years running out?
I believe that they are, but I don't know off the top of my head.
There are or there aren't?
This coming fiscal year?
Yes, this coming fiscal year, there's, I wish I could remember which, but there is something running out. And also you should know that we've not paid any incentives this year at all because of non-compliance with, um, uh, contracts.
Usually employee related, but not able to keep their numbers up, I'm guessing.
They have to do a certain level of reporting on their employees.
Okay.
And we're still, and we're still investigating all that, we've not paid anything yet.
Yes, but yes, and. Might be Raffletec, but I don't remember off the top of my head which one it is. Every meeting but this one.
That's okay. So do we want, we, be a fine time to help Daniel right here, where are we at with consensus with that number for economic development? It was at twenty last year. I'll just pull you, Sandra, what you thinking? And don't be scared you're going to hurt anybody's feelings, this, we're just going to talk it through here.
Twenty-five.
And how would you like that split up, the twenty and five or? Or all twenty-five to them or?
Well, fifteen and ten.
Fifteen and ten, okay, Randy, what you think?
I would do the twenty-five and, and twenty and five for the E I F.
Okay, Jeff.
I'd like to see us be a full partner with them.
Where you at, James?
I want to hear from you because I feel like we're dropping hints.
I'm just, I would go, if it was me on this particular situation, I would go twenty and twenty and make it forty.
Agree with you.
Twenty, I mean, I just, twenty and twenty and make it forty, and then I would, uh. You know, I'd like to know, uh, is anybody, Jeff, has anybody talked to Mark Williams about anything, any changes they're making or staff issues or anything with those folks?
This, this number is reflective of his request this year, he requested a three percent increase.
Okay. If everybody's good with that, we'll leave that one alone, but, so where are we at? I just see him using the, um, what's that, the initials, E I F money, uh, to. Make these projects look better by doing some infrastructure work on them, uh, master plans, so on and so forth. I just think it's a good idea. For the next few years to get it in play.
Would you, would you be willing to tie a string to that that it had to be spent in Town?
I mean, you can ask, I just.
Because she was willing to do that whenever we were going to do the property of the.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, we can ask, um, I can't promise you that that'll happen. Um, because they're already got things in the works and that's, they're had to figure out some way to keep it separated. Some of the things they're working on close by are not in Mills River. But would still benefit Mills River.
And I think they got plenty going on on the front place that they could use it on, so.
They got one piece, yes. Yeah. They did. And they may not even need it, there's the thing, you know. But this, I just know that organization to know if, if we did need it over there, they would figure out some way to come up with it. They would use some of their grant money or whatever to make it happen here. You know, as long as we're good partners with them.
I could go twenty and twenty.
You could go twenty and twenty?
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't want to put nobody in the spot, I just throw my two cents out there, I'm very flexible on this, just so you know.
I would rather stay at twenty and, and five for the.
Twenty and five, twenty, 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 cool. So.
Go with twenty, twenty.
I mean, that's cutting hairs or. Twenty and fifteen, whatever you want to do. I know they need their staff money, there's just no way to put it to run without staff money.
Would you at least tie the string to the E I F money that stay in Town Mill River?
I'll certainly make the request, yeah, yeah, before you, before you prove the budget, I'll have an answer to that.
Okay, fair enough, so. Any more on this right here, if not, we'll move on to something else, I'm sure we got a couple more things in here we need to figure out for.
Do we have to finish up the nonprofits from the last part of money?
We'll have to at some point, at some point for sure, yeah.
I didn't know, does it have to be done before the end of this year?
It doesn't have to be, no.
As soon as we get this big budget behind us, we'll have more flexibility with our time. Unless something major comes up. Where we going to now, Randy?
So were there other questions on the other nonprofits?
That was on seventy-seven. We get on the other nonprofits?
Continue to ask them, smart start and. Everybody is spent in Mill River.
That is the intention of those funds, to be spending for Glenn Marlowe and Mills River Elementary, but we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a memorandum with them as well, an agreement, just like we did last year, that's where the money goes.
Everybody good with that? Alright, anything else budget related? If you find any more typos, errors, whatever in the, the latest one, let them know so they can get them fixed and. Make it cleaner come the day of we approve them.
You fixed them between the days.
I don't mean to belabor the point, but are we, are we picking a tax rate or are we, are we going with the scenarios that we discussed and then come back and see where things stand? In other words, you want me to try to hit a certain tax rate or do you want me to adjust it for those items we discussed?
Because we're looking at trying to. Uh, approve those at the next meeting, correct?
The, the adopt, excuse me, the, the public hearing is scheduled for your next meeting and you can adopt the budget that night if you're comfortable with it, or you can, uh, have the public hearing and then adopt at your next meeting.
I guess my problem would be with that, would be, you know, the public can come in here and pick one of these up to look at getting theirself prepared for the public hearing. Then we go to the public hearing and we decrease, increase, whatever we do, let's just say. That's going to be a major change, correct?
Maybe, depending upon what it would take to get to a certain tax rate.
Okay.
But you could always, you could always recess the public hearing or advertise for a new one if you wanted to.
Okay.
But, but I, I think that if you advertised. One number and you lower that number, I don't think that would be a problem.
Okay, okay.
I, I think you'd be fine, but, um, yeah.
Okay, alright, so I need to know. So, just so he's asking, we're going to get into look at y'all's numbers.
Please.
See where they come to as far as sixteen and a half cents or whatever it is, and then we. We get him to email us one of those to look over and see if we can live with that. Is that what y'all are asking to be done, I guess?
I'll, I'll, I'll email you a couple of scenarios, um, the first and next week with keeping in mind the six percent, the payment. Uh, excuse me, the, the debt payment and then reducing the contingencies. And, and, uh, no additional staff and see where that puts us.
That, that suits me.
Can you, can you, sorry, more work, can you do that exactly and then also leave in the contingency? I think it's point seven three, but.
Yeah.
I like toward, uh, if I'm not being checked.
So one of them is everything I just mentioned, and then we'll do another one. I mean, leaving the contingencies as they are, is that what you were asking? Okay.
My question would be, if we're going to, would it be possible to have a few copies of what we're getting middle of the week? Uh, to where the public could get their hands on it if they come in? Just because we're probably going to discuss both of those on the eighth, and I want to make sure everybody's got full knowledge of what will possibly could happen.
Sure thing.
You know. Not at all, I don't think a whole lot come in and get them, but if we could just have them ready in case they do or be able to print them off or something for them. Okay, so if we've got that and that done. If you don't have any other questions for us, we could probably move on with our agenda.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, the next one on here is E, the resolution for bill six seventy-five, when you get caught up, I'll let you just. Explain some of this so everybody understands it.
Sure, Mike, I'm going to give you a heads up, I might call on you to help me with this. As we have done this legislative session, trying to keep an eye on, on bills that could impact Mills River, initially Senate Bill six seventy-five, um, was not on our radar because it. Was written to abolish extraterritorial jurisdictions, which Mills River does not have, for those of you who are curious. An extraterritorial jurisdiction is the area beyond your corporate limits that you still maintain zoning authority over. Um, I believe Hendersonville has one and I'm not sure who, who else might have one in the county. Uh, it's an interesting concept constitutionally speaking because you have laws that are your property a subject to you, you can't vote for the people who actually make those laws. Um, that's neither here nor there, it's just an interesting background. Um, so again, it wasn't on our radar until just this week, two days ago, I believe it was, they amended the bill to, uh, initially it was to prohibit. Any minimum lot size requirements in town, so our minimum lot size is thirty thousand square feet, it would, it would. Uh, prohibit the town from setting any such minimum size, but it was recently amended, I guess it was today or yesterday, Mike, can you give me, can you give them an update on where it is now, please?
Yeah, so ju- just yesterday in the Senate, they amended it. From prohibiting a minimum lot size to capping maximum lot sizes for single-family homes, and again, two fam- family homes, so duplexes as well. At eighty-seven hundred square feet, and then that is actually tied to a residential density requirement they put in as well. That no municipality or, or county could require a density less than five units an acre. And if you divide the forty-three thousand, whatever it is, square feet and acres by five, that's where eighty-seven hundred comes from.
Exactly.
So if this were to pass, um, that would be the maximum we would be able to do. And obviously it would do away with our low-density residential requirements.
So we feel this, considering our comprehensive plans, considering the conversations that we've had as of late regarding rezonings as conditional zonings. This would have a dramatic impact on the development patterns of Mills River, so we felt it was appropriate to go ahead and draft the resolution opposing this. And if council is satisfied with its language, um, then approves it and we'll get it sent off to delegation, uh, tomorrow.
As big a deal as this is, uh, do we know exactly who, uh, presented this bill?
I don't, I'll hand you, I'm like.
Okay.
I do not.
Okay.
The, the, the one fact I'll, I'll bring up is normally they don't continue working on bills after the crossover deadline, so this started in the Senate. Failed to meet crossover to go into the House, but has continued to be worked on.
Okay. Okay, so what we're looking to do is make a motion to adopt this resolution, and it's, if everybody feels comfortable with it. I'd entertain a motion to do so. I'd entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Mayor, would it be, would it be out of line for us to read this into the record?
Not at all.
Could, could, could we have that happen?
Sure.
I just feel like for somebody that might be watching.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and, and read this for those who are, uh, watching and listening. So this is resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, resolution to oppose Senate Bill six seventy-five addressing land use clarification and changes. Whereas the town of Mills River strives to offer exceptional quality of life and opportunities for prosperity to its residents, property owners, businesses. And whereas the Making Mills River twenty forty comprehensive plan, comprehensive land use plan survey results, which was adopted by town council on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, resulting from two years of public input shows Mills River residents are very much in favor of preserving land and keeping housing density low. And whereas goals of a Making Mills River twenty forty comprehensive plan include protecting, enhancing the rural or small town character of Mills River, promoting preservation of agriculture and natural land while respecting property rights, managing growth and investing in Mills River to promote land stewardship, community development and fiscal responsibility, and encouraging housing choices of persons for of all ages and different income levels. And whereas North Carolina Senate Bill six seventy-five, which was filed in the Senate on April sixth, twenty twenty-three, and failed to meet the crossover deadline, was amended to abolish extraterritorial jurisdiction and also to include a preemption of minimum lot sizes for single family and two-family developments set by local governments. And whereas this legislation prohibits local governments from establishing minimum lot sizes containing single-family detached, single-family attached and two-family dwellings about the proposed standard of eight thousand seven hundred square feet and below the five units per acre residential density. And whereas Senate Bill six seventy-five directly impacts Mills River in regards to general statute one sixty D dash seven oh two and North Carolina statute one sixty D dash eight oh four, by removing important compatibility protections and establish residential areas by allowing haphazard lodging patterns, increase density and allowing further buyright subdivision inside established neighborhoods. And whereas Senate Bill six seventy-five, which will preempt any minimum lot size requirements the town has in place and will allow subdivisions of land for residential uses, single family and two-family homes to create lot size with that regard to the planning and zoning efforts of counties and municipalities in North Carolina. And whereas the town of Mills River zoning and subdivision regulations reflect a strong commitment to individual, individual property rights while seeking to retain the unique rural character of our residents, love and respect and expect. Now for, therefore be it resolved, the town of Mills River Town Council hereby adopts resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine opposing Senate Bill six seventy-five, which includes restrictions on minimum lot sizes for single-family dwelling in disregards to desires of Mills River citizens. Adopted this the twenty-fifth day of May, twenty twenty-three.
Just to clarify.
Good. Thank you, Michael, for finding us out. So now that's been read in, anybody feel comfortable with making a motion to send it on to those?
I'm moving here to adopt resolutions that oppose Senate six seventy-five, address land use, address land use changes. Point three dash nine.
Uh, second.
Second.
Randy, any discussion?
I'll throw one thing as, uh, being held. You can tell the folks that pin these things give no consideration to the poverty or natural.
Exactly.
You don't want five units per acre on something like this.
And somebody will try to do it if they've got the ability.
Like on centralized things like that.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? Staff gets caught up, we'll just get a little rundown on this, uh, picnic shed. I know we still got some outstanding monies, uh, owed and we've got some issues here and there. We gotta figure out, let's see where we're at with everything. Would you just update council on where we're at with everything?
Yeah, so just as a quick reminder, earlier this year, uh, when we had that, that deep freeze, the plumbing in the picnic shelter froze and broke. And so all the fixtures broke with it. Um, and, uh, we're in discussions right now with the, with the contractor, architect, as well as our attorney about the responsibility from that, that happening. And it is our understanding that there were, there was an exhaust fan that ran when it was not supposed to be running in, during that cold spell, which, uh, which essentially extracted, extracted all of the, the warm air from the building, uh, and it was supposed to be running either on a timer, um, or when it was triggered, uh, but it was just running consistently, constantly. Um, so we, we met with our attorney yesterday morning actually to discuss next steps. That is, uh, will include a letter to the contractors explaining our position that we believe it is, is their responsibility to repair the damages and, um, that we will have it inspected once it's all repaired to make sure that, um, obviously that it's built to code, but the, that, that goes without saying, but just to make sure that it's sufficient to, keep from freezing in the future and make sure we have consistent water pressure and the building is ready to go for the public.
Okay, so probably got two or three questions and anybody else feel free to jump in. The water issue, um, have we not got that resolved? The pressure issues down there?
We, 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 yes, the water pressure issue is resolved on a global sense, if you will, but we've not tested it in a new facility because we're waiting to have the repairs made.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, do, we don't have a, do we have a fix, a design fix or anything we do?
Yeah, we, we, we consulted a, a third-party plumber to come in and assess the damage and provide us a quote to prepare that.
Does the builder know what that fix is?
I think they have their own plan to, to, to fix it as well. We've, we've not discussed that with them in detail, though.
Okay. I would, I would just, we just need to get this resolved and move on. Um, you know, we got a lot of money tied up in it. We need to get it open and get it working. Um.
Agreed.
Will we lose our standing if we fix it and then have our, uh, our money's back later?
Uh, from money's back from whom?
Like we're, we're not paying our plumber that we found to help fix it so we can open it because we're waiting on the attorney to work it out with the contractor. Can we not just front the money, fix it? Let all the little kids.
Well.
During the summer.
Well, let me tell you from a builder's standpoint, and I'm just telling you from a builder's standpoint, I, if it was my building, my permit, new building, I had rather fix it myself because he's holding a one-year warranty on the workmanship and, or, or maybe five on workmanship, one on parts and stuff. And if you let somebody else come in, it's just fresh, you're opening a can of worms on who did what and when, you know, and it would possibly need to be re, you know, unless they work out a deal and they say just do that, uh, that's where I would be with it.
Was there a timeline and when is this supposed to be done? Like, it's supposed to be done in December?
Mm-hmm. It was.
The building.
That's right.
Yeah, the building was supposed to be CO'd and they, but it actually CO'd.
It was, it was CO'd. I don't know the date of that, but it was.
Yeah, all that was, all that felt fit through. I just know on a commercial standpoint, he's probably got bond monies tied up in it. He's probably trying to move on to other projects and they're probably, it's probably holding him up from getting other projects up and going.
Yeah, we're, we're planning to get it as soon as we can.
Are you at liberty to re- uh, to reveal how much the fix would be to fix it?
Thirty-eight hundred dollars if I'm not mistaken, is that?
That sounds about right.
For the, for the repairs.
The initial repair. I think the big question from our third-party plumber, um, was the outside hose bibs that froze and whether those could be repaired without removing the stonework. And so that would be, I think, the big question. The plumbing itself is not super expensive. Um, but if the initial, if the, if the, the outside hose bibs cannot be repaired from the outside and stonework has to be removed, that, that I think is like the big question mark on, on cost.
Thanks. That should be very simple by having someone pull those two and see if it pulls out far enough. If they build a loop in there, that could be simple enough to do, um.
The, the other one worked fine?
The other restroom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you talked to Sharon yesterday, did she give you any timeline on when she would be able to present?
Well, we're, we're actually preparing a letter for her review, which will be, she'll have it tomorrow for her review and then we'll send it on to the contractor architect.
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
Yeah, we're gonna.
As quick as possible.
The contractor just said no.
No, we haven't. We, we, we were, it was our opinion that the, that the designer was at fault for this. Um, and we still share that opinion, but the, in, in order for us to have it repaired and get it functional, it's most likely that the contractor will do that work if we wanna maintain that warranty that the mayor mentioned. Um, so that's what we were trying to figure out and then how we're gonna pay for it. Uh, we, when we met with them a couple of months ago, the, the, the consensus among a couple of the council and staff was to not invest any more public money into it until it was resolved. Um, but in order for the work to happen, money's gonna have to be spent on it. It is, it is our attorney's opinion and ours that we share that the contractor should bear that cost of those repairs. And that will all be in that letter that we, that we present to them.
Okay. Okay, well, just try to get that to them as quick as possible and let's try to get this thing rolling. I'll get them settled up so we can use it and get it going.
Certainly.
Everybody on board with that? Okay, all right. Uh, so now we're going on farmer's market discussion. Do you have, uh, uh, anything other than what was, uh, the potential spot over here?
Well, we were gonna look and see what was available.
For a spot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, to be honest with you, when we did the walkthrough, uh, just, what's it been, two, three weeks ago? Yeah, me and Jeff, as we come around through there, realized that that open air shed is probably at least a hundred, hundred and twenty foot long, sixty, seventy foot wide covered. Um, he says it does drip here and there in a place or two and it might need a roof. But, uh, we quickly seen the potential and Daniel as well to sandblast the red iron, paint it, go in there, clean it up and then reconcrete that whole floor. And, uh, all the vendors could potentially be under roof. They could still set their tents up for display, but they would be under roof. Wouldn't keep the blowing rain and the wind out, but it would be under roof. And the good thing about it, when you're standing there, it's approximately sixty-five to seventy feet to this big lower parking lot. Just boom, right there. I think y'all even did a site visit since, uh, we brought it up to Sandra the other day. Uh, so Daniel and all of us on board and Jeff thought, well, you know, we got, and there's outside restroom enclosed, but they're remote from the site that's, uh, ready to use, just gotta turn the water on to them, men's and women's. So that's already in place. We got running water. Uh, it, just all of a sudden, it is, this is where it could be with, uh, not a whole lot of expense to get it going. Uh, so that is our idea as of today. Uh, and I'll leave it to Jeff to put any more remarks in and, uh, James and Randy may just now be hearing about it. Sandra, I discussed it with Sandra Tuesday, I think it was. The potential for it to possibly go there.
There a ditch?
A, a little one, but we would have to probably cobert or something across to do a walkway over there. Would need to.
What about any disabilities? That, that's where you're going, right? You people.
Well, that's what we saw about with concrete it or in pave.
From the parking lot?
Yeah, it wouldn't be that bad at all. Not really. You feel that same way?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is accessible parking at the building, but it requires someone to drive all the way down the road. And I don't know that we would want that during the market hours. So we had talked about building a connection from our lower lot over to the, over to the shed.
And honestly, after looking at it again, we could potentially, if, if we seen the need for more parking, it might be easier to add parking onto that lot, but turn it back across onto our potentially new piece of property. And yeah, it's kinda all lays on the same level right there and it wouldn't be really, uh, disturbing anything else that the park would have going on. It would just provide more parking and we'd have paved access to it immediately and then we'd just be adding on.
You're talking about paved access, sorry. The program is walking or driving?
Uh, well, initially for next year, we would just need to probably either concrete and pay you a portion of that over there or do, or do the walkway all the way across and concrete would be potentially my guess. And then if we did any paving, pave back to the concrete. Like if we seen the need for handicap parking at the side itself, they would just have to come up the gravel road for now and park over there if this was just too much of a trek for them to come from this lot over there, this.
Is there a distance thing and, and have you know of like how far away a handicap park could be from?
Hmm, I don't know.
Just like the path has to be handicapped.
It's something I would definitely have to research for, um.
For an open air market, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, because they're at school, they're not parking right down in there with them there, or do they?
There, there, there are handicap spaces in front of the school that are always open. The vendors don't park there and so we do have some.
Okay.
Everything just walks right into it.
Yeah. Yeah, but when I seen that would be simple enough as long as they was willing to drive up the barn access driveway to get there and it could be paved from there into the shed.
So the upgrades to the shed would be paid by whom?
These, uh, it's already put in the budget, seventy-five thousand dollars contingency for it and outfitting part of the, I wanna call it the milk station for the tractors and maintenance. That's gonna weigh, there's enough room over there. I know you ain't been over there yet, Randy, but there's enough room over there to, we don't even have to have to build this other maintenance building that we was talking about. There's plenty of room over there for everything for a while.
So in prior discussions, the farmer's market said that they were grants available to.
Exactly.
Once they get designated a home, they're.
A permanent home.
Right.
So would, would it not be? So if we did this and made that for the farmer's market that shed, did the farmer's market within for grants to upgrade that facility instead of the town paying for the concrete and painting up?
Well, they, they will, I'm sure, put in for grants.
Yeah.
Or upgrading stuff like that. But that building over there is, it's large and it's beautiful. There's a lot of room. Parks could use it for yoga, different kind of classes over there. It would free up some of these rooms during the summertime and the warm weather. Um, it's big enough. They could even do bicycle safety in it. It's huge.
So what I'm getting at is there's not gonna be, nothing's gonna be going on over there this year.
Not until next year.
Right. So would that give you, would that give the farmer's market enough time to find monies to upgrade that building?
Will you go to the microphone if you're gonna speak, please?
I probably hadn't looked into it yet to see what's available.
I'm not sure we would get them in time to have the work done for opening of the market, given the windows of when grants become available after the first of the year and when they're awarded and then turn around and have to do the work. I don't think the timeline would permit it to be completed before the first of May.
So would there, could you, would it be a reimbursable? So if the town funded the money, could you find grant money to reimburse us for it?
Uh, as far as guaranteeing, no, we would try our best to find grants. But grants are one of those, you know, you're rolling the dice. You don't, you're not guaranteed a grant.
It would definitely be something we would try to get.
And I'm sure, I know there's money out there available. We would just have to find the right grant or the right grant that would pay for, you know, they don't pay for everything. Certain things they will pay for, certain infrastructure they will, certain ones they won't.
Yeah.
So that'd be a process to, you know, we would be happy to jump in on that as soon as possible. So that'd be a process to, you know, we would be happy to jump in on that as soon as possible to get in motion.
So you don't might even be able, my, my hopes would be they might could even possibly get a matching grant to help, uh, redo the roof, or to pay for the handicap parking spots, the paving part of that, portion of that, or something to that nature. We don't know, we hadn't looked, we don't, y'all don't know.
So could we go to our local grant expert over here, uh, Nicole?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not super familiar with farm market grants, obviously. Um, you know, one of the big things we did talk about though is getting that master plan done. And so we're allocating land before doing that master plan, and you all know I'm very, very supportive of having the farm market. I just don't wanna put the cart before the horse. But do we need to do an overall view of, of what's gonna happen on that property to make sure this is the best location? And I do think logically it is a very good place, and I think it's a very good possibility that that's what would come out of that plan. But I know specifically for parks grants, if we have that plan in place first, we do our public input. We ask the people of Mills River what they wanna see out there. We look at the, you know, the, the positive and negatives of all the stuff we do and go through that process, then we'd have a much better opportunity to get grants going forward. And I would think if we had that plan in place that's supported, that says the town, the town of Mills River, we asked the people, we asked the citizens, they want this, then when they go to apply for grants, they'd be much more likely to get that grant because that work has been done.
Right.
How quick could we do that? How quick could we come up with a plan?
Is, let, let me just take a step back real quick. In practical terms, any improvements that we make over there are gonna be to the benefit of the town of Mills River, not, not just the market.
Right.
So I, I, I think the, the best way to go about doing something like this is if we were to pursue grants, we would ask the market to provide the town's match. So let's say we got a grant for a hundred thousand dollars and a twenty-five percent match, we would charge the market with funding the other twenty-five thousand dollars so that it would be built through grant funding, that the taxpayers wouldn't have to put that bill, so to speak. Cause at the end of the day, it's a town asset, and we don't want, nothing personal to you guys, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna give the money to the market to let them improve a town facility. We want them in control of, of what happens over there.
And from our walkthrough and, and dreaming, we saw that. It was just amazing. But like Sandra said, it is huge, and it could be used for other events that the town may wanna host. I mean, there may be, festivals or fairs or whatever that could set up in there, you know, during the season that we're not using it, or on Sundays, like the party in the park thing.
Maybe, maybe in the park, they could put it at one end and have people sitting under there in the drive.
If it's raining, you could have an option for it versus if it's not raining, the soccer field's great.
Exactly. I'm just saying that basketball, indoor basketball courts in the shade, there's room for probably two under that thing. It's, it's under, it's, sky's the limit.
Right.
It's just gotten, it needs some, it needs some, needs a freshen up, you know? We're trying to turn a cow barn into, or cow shed into something recreational and beneficial to the town.
And I'll go on the record, I think it, I think it's the ideal spot for the farmer's market. I just don't want to leave any free grant money on the table somewhere that we can utilize.
But, you know, like I say, grants are, I know there's grants out there. I know we can get some, but as far as a timeline, when and how much? You know?
Do, do y'all have any staff that could start really looking into that? I mean.
You're looking at them.
Okay.
I mean, you know, we pay Tala a little bit to manage the market, and definitely not the kitchen coordinator or the kids.
Nobody, uh, no volunteers that's got backgrounds in that?
We would reach out to, to help us.
We might.
Start looking, but there's no.
No.
None that we know.
No good.
No, no names immediately spring to mind. It would say, yes, they would help us. I'm sure we can find, you know, when this, but once again, there has to be something, some kind of agreement before even.
Sure.
Grant people even talk to us.
Well, I think, I think if we have this as a plan, and our vendors, not our vendors, our customers have been very curious about what's been going on, cause we've been having lots of people asking questions, you know, what have we heard yet about this proposal we had made over here and which we have heard, we don't know, we don't know. If we now have something that we can go forward with, we may very well be able to find a volunteer that would step up and help us with the grant, right?
Yeah. The only thing I would tell you that they're still gonna have to be patient because we're still probably at least two months
Exactly.
away from owning at best.
Yes.
So we're still in a waiting game.
And Nicole, did I hear you? Did I understand you correct? That we don't want to promise something before we have the master plan, parks plan.
That's what she said.
So we don't wanna endanger our possibility of getting a five hundred thousand dollar grant for the property.
Yes, so with the, the waiver, what we'll have to do is we have to do a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. With that, you have to have like an initial phase of what you're doing. So we certainly can dictate in that plan that we want the farm market in that space, if, if that's.
On one day a week, one day a week for twenty-six.
Right. Well, that it's, it's for, for market type space, for market type events. Obviously, we can use it for lots of other things, but, um, I don't think it's gonna affect the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund money for land acquisition if we identify that in our plan. But if we're looking at other grant opportunities outside of the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, that's just where I'd try to figure out how to best save it. So so when you do the master plan, and that's where you really take a look at the whole property, and I don't want to, I guess, if we designate that for something specific already, we would have to basically chunk off that piece and not include it.
It'd have to be. Yeah, but I wouldn't do that. I would not do that at all. All, all we're gonna do is we're gonna allow these folks to use it on Saturday mornings for their season. It, you know, no different than the school. So that's still gonna be town property. We're gonna do what we want to do with it six and a half days, six and a half days a week.
For six months.
For six months, seven days, the other six months. So all we're gonna do is reach an agreement at some point with them that they are gonna be able to use that facility for that with the parking being over here uh, to start with.
I just don't want anything to endanger that trust fund.
But yeah, I don't, so that's why I don't think, uh, I don't, I don't really see, I don't know it good enough. I don't really see how it could if we're just.
I don't think it would endanger Parks and Recreation Trust money for the land acquisition that we received the waiver for. I don't think it's gonna hurt our application if that work is essentially already being done. But we would have to include it in the master prep plan process. I think if we're looking to apply for grants like right now to get this work done before that master plan's done, I guess I think that's where we might miss out. If there's other grant opportunities, if we haven't done our due diligence, we haven't got the support from, and I, I fully expect we would get the support for the town of Mills River. I fully expect once we complete the master plan that, that would be a very logical thing to do that, but when you do that master plan, you, you proved to these grant agencies that you asked your citizens, and this is what they want done with that money, and you looked at all your environmental factors and all your other uses to make sure that this is the best use of that piece of property. So not to say it would hurt the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund money for land acquisition, but as you're looking at other grants, if you apply this year versus next year, when you have that plan, I think that's where your chances maybe improve.
Okay.
If I may, let me offer this.
Sure.
For the council and we have operators here as well as staff, but uh, you know, I may want to visit with the mayor, just do a walkthrough as part of the contractual obligation. And I, I offer this only cause it's sort of in my area, but that, that still building we're talking about, it's reached the end of its service life. And, uh, any move to it by anybody, whether purely for recreation, it's farmer's market, it is short term. I don't know that I'd put much of any money in it. I wouldn't sandblast it because I think it's important to fall down.
Yeah.
You just have to know about animal waste and ammonia and what it is, the steel, and anyway. But I still saw it and offered it to the mayor and the, uh, the town managers that I could see that, you know, a temporary home with the farmer's market. Maybe that years down the road, we put up the exact same buildings, that same spot, same footprint, and say this worked great, but uh, I would say if you're one council person, someone with a little bit of technical knowledge, I would say any move to it for any use is temporary at best. And, and I would definitely pump the brakes on putting much money into that building as it is, simply for the fact it has reached in service life. I don't think reskimming the roof will address all the concerns long-term. I think you have to build from ground up, but I think it's going to just be a little inspection. I think it'll serve its purpose for a year or two, maybe even five years, but I think it's a temporary home with farmer's market. And I think it'll be an opportunity to have a test run, because it worked well with, you know, the flow of the park and what the town's needs are, and, and the farm market and vendors clients, so, uh, while I was, you know, when we were talking about the newly acquired property on the other side of park, uh, we're talking about from ground up, and I was thinking, whatever we do, I wanna be the permanent home. I wanna keep redoing this, but I see this simply as a temporary home or anything, just because it's a eight building. So maybe that'll lay some of your concerns, and then I'd wanna be upfront with, and of course, it's just my opinion, but the farmer's market is that even if we're in agreement, the town's agreement, that that's the footprint that you're always gonna be on, that building for you temporary, but it's not gonna be long term. But I think it's gonna be a good way to test the waters and, uh, get trial run and see if this is really gonna be the best place and if we mesh up with our master plan. And I think we've already discussed it tonight, but at best, we're gonna close the summer. The property owner is gonna be on there till the end of the year doing ag activities. So, you know, it's available to us even as the new owners, if everything goes through the summer until basically the start of twenty-four.
Yes.
So, uh, you know, there's only so much we can do between January and your launch date in May, but I'll still say we're not able to do it, but it's gonna be very, very compressed, but I don't see the town pouring much money in that building for any, but tear it down, but what we need.
Got you. Okay. Any more discussion on that? Trying to give you an idea?
So if I can ask a question?
Sure.
What amount of money would you think would be appropriate to put into it? Because it would take some heavy duty cleaning, you know, before it could be used for anything.
Absolutely.
Right, in terms of pressure washing, or you can, you can slap a, go to hang on. Anything structural that I would not, and then I would bear in mind, if you're doing things, it already has a concrete slab, there's a drop in the middle, maybe that has to be cut, broken out, patched. But I think patrons and vendors can walk on roof pavement. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the, what's in it. The troughs are not a concern, but that's something, you know, if you've got bunks on both sides and down the middle. Doesn't have to be. I, I'd wide open on if this is a temporary home, and it may be that you tear it all down and build right back the exact same thing, but just new, but just, you know, I said, at this point, we'll be lucky if you can be in there physically May, but if we do, it's gonna be now slapping lipstick on pig and calling it good and doing what we have, that's best we can do, but, you know, long range, it'll work. It'll be different depending on master plans and how this works out for you. But when I walked through it with the mayor and the town manager, the owner weeks ago, I thought, I see a vendor shed in the front of the park. I see level ground, I see concrete factory, uh, picking shelter right now. No, and, and like I say, the, the, you know, a coat of paint, you know, pressure washing and a coat of paint would be just fine, cause that, you know.
I think bunks are tore out, that center aisles tore out of there and patched in, it'll look, and painted, it'll look.
I, I didn't look good enough, because we were just there a little bit. A lot of those bunks, they would pour the whole slab and then set the bunk on top. And if they did that, that would be.
Might sheer right off.
Yeah, that hopefully, you know, like if I didn't get a shovel and dig in them and see
Right.
whether there's concrete under, but that would be, you know, if they were, if that's what they did, that would be almost a
Right.
Not nothing, it'd be major work.
Yeah, but.
It wouldn't be super makes, yeah.
Exactly.
In perfect world, this fall, hopefully, we can work, say, what can we do in that depressed timeframe from the deadline to a rear pay opening? Get it where it's useful for the farmer's market. We're on agreement that it can be made that way, and we know price tag that council supports, and I can see us doing, and I don't see us putting any time to run, what's the point of putting that in? It was, who's gonna use it? It's not worth it.
Yeah.
So we may need to hold our thoughts on grants that we would apply for, for a future shed and not just for repairs on this one.
And it may be based on what the partner would say.
Right, exactly.
The park, it could be closer to the highway and that brand new up out of the ground, you know? Well, he, it's just ideal for some other recreation project, I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe for, you mean the future, that's a temporary home in May, very well be a permanent home, but I would like to see farmer's market store utilize these structures that the town hopefully requires.
Okay.
That's good, thank you.
Nope. Anything else on that before moving on? Okay. Uh, staff updates, town clerk?
Mine's done.
Oh. No updates, pretty clear. No update. All right, tax collector, I know she's not here. She probably don't have anything, or somebody speaking in her behalf.
No, we're good.
All right, Parks and Rec, Nicole?
I just real quick, there's a blood drive in here tomorrow, so anybody who's interested in bleeding with us, Tammy will be here. Um, there's still a few slots open, so between eleven and four, just come on in and, uh, save a life.
Awesome. Uh, planning director.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk. Um, just wanted to update everyone that was listening online, oh, everyone. Right. Um, we, we got a minor special use permit submitted for a shopping center development at five Penland Road and one forty Emma Sharp Road. Uh, council members, that's the property that was rezoned for general business, uh, later last year behind the Bojangles. Uh, Board of Adjustment is hearing that June thirteenth. Uh, we did all public notice, uh, today, so signs are out there, letters are out in mail. Uh, another development I wanted to make you aware of, we received a zoning permit of maybe two weeks ago for a seventy unit senior living facility expansion to the Landings Continuing Care Facility, the nursing home, next to the Hendersonville Water Treatment Plant. Uh, staff finished that review this week and sent comments to the applicant. Uh, just wanted to announce too that, uh, we have a hollow genetics at the old Gaia Herb's Greenhouse. They had their ribbon cutting this week uh, that the manager and I attended. Uh, good to have a new agricultural partner in the town, and then we also issued the temp CO this week for the fire department, so they're moving towards their uh, getting their final CO and the opening ceremony on June third.
Okay. Oh, Daniel?
Uh, the only thing I'll add to that conversation, excuse me, to the updates, is we had our first meeting with the Land Preservation Committee last week. We're meeting again on Tuesday. And, um, basically, the, the initial meeting consisted of kinda laying out the expectations for the work to be done. And we came up with, um, from that conversation that we're gonna present to them some, some metrics that the property would have to meet to qualify to be considered for, for land preservation purposes. Um, so we are working on that and we'll present it to the committee on Tuesday.
I would like to add to that, that, you know, in thinking about this, I, I would really like to see, and for everybody involved in that, to from the start through the completion of it, whenever that is, hundred and fifty, two hundred years from now, whatever. I would like to see the sales point to be that we could potentially set aside enough land for farm that inside the town limits, that the citizens of Mills River could survive off of that at some point in time, when it was, when it, that we could salvage enough land, whatever that magic number is, five hundred acres, whatever it would take to feed the ten thousand people in Mills River, to have it set aside and know it was there, that if a going got real bad one day, we could work out of that. You know, it would always be set aside for that. That would be awesome. If you think about that, that would be absolutely awesome.
It's a great idea.
I mean, I don't know if there's any way to tie it to that, but that would be a great sales pitch, it looks to me like.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we could at least survive here, you know, we'd have it set aside for that.
Mm-hmm.
But it takes some greenhouse.
I was gonna say. Current growth. Or, you know, what, technology, are we pumping in?
We might, if the going gets rough, we'll talk. We'll need some maders and stuff in the winter, too. Probably not, we ain't gonna eat them flyers, but we'll eat maders and stuff. All right, so, uh, council comments?
Hmm, have they got any work towards getting the minutes done from April twenty-seventh, Cleveland?
Mm-hmm, there'll be a bell at your next meeting.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I'm good. Yeah. Philper. You're on the roll now, Philper.
I am.
You're opening up, you're opening up, you're opening up.
This is unique.
My council person out of you yet, go ahead.
On that note, no, I don't.
On that note, no, I don't. I make a motion, we adjourn.
No, 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 wait, wait, I got something. I noticed you, you two gentlemen, uh. Help me out, who are you? Yeah. Y'all, you come in for some reason. Can anything we can help you with? Oh, me, as you meet, oh, okay, you stand by, he's bigger than I am. Uh, y'all still ready to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, make a motion. Okay, James, Randy second, I'm sure no discussion on that. All in favor? The info. Uh, yeah, I figured, you are.